In order, all stand, pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have we established a forum?
Yes.
Counsel in your minute, and your package will see the minutes for a meeting on January the 25th. Looks good to me, I make the motion to accept it, Ms. Rippon.
Second.
Motion is second, any additions or corrections to those things? Hearing none, all in favor of acceptance, please signify by raised hand, unanimous. Your fact that the next item is an animal control ordinance, and we have an animal control ordinance, of course, but the county changed theirs, and under the service deliver strategy agreement, they provide the service for us, and, but, they want ours to match theirs, so this is just simply a rewriting, in most cases, exactly what we had, but it does parallel theirs, so we just make ours the same as theirs, so that they will continue the service. After you've thought about it, we need a motion one way or the other to accept or decline?
Motion to accept.
Pardon, to accept?
On second.
On second. Any questions?
I have one thing on se- oh, I gotta raise my hand.
Go ahead.
On 714, it mentions special events, and I wondered if our special events covered that in particular. So I'm checking all the papers, I don't know.
What's the section?
It's section, um, 714.
714.
It mentions special events, and I just need to be sure our special events match that, too. Number eight. I don't know that it's in our special events section, so I'm saying it should it be.
We'll check to be sure that it does, and if so, we might that parallel with this. Thank you. Any other questions? Motion? Did you have the old agreement, so that we could compare them? Do you know what they changed? I don't think they changed the whole lot, but it's-
I looked at it, too.
They rewrote some stuff and changed it around, but I don't think they, I don't think they made that much changes. If it's your pleasure, would you like to make that comparison? Before we accept this?
No, but after the meeting, I'd like to, if you got the old one.
Mm-hmm. We can do that.
It'd take a while, you know, the jokes to pose it, but I'm right. I'd just like singles.
Yeah, why don't we do that, but in the meantime, if we want them to still act, we're gonna have to pass this, so.
I don't see anything out of the ordinary, so I'm right. I've been agreed by this.
Any other additions or corrections or questions? Hearing none, a motion to accept or decline would be in order.
Motion to accept.
We already got that, we already did that.
Who gave the second?
I am.
Okay. All in favor, signify by raised hand, unanimous. Next thing in your package is a lease agreement with the, or for our property that we lease out to the landscaping people. We do have a new tenant. As you notice, we do have a good weight on that, much better than we did before. Very, very good tenants, they want everything spick and span, and they like to keep it that way, so I'm told. We did make some concessions to get them in there and get the place looking really nice. We painted the office, new carpet, new commode, new lots, so right now, it's in very, very good shape. They've come in and cleaned out these shop building, down to vacuuming everything out, so it's very, very clean. We've got the heat going, we've got a new gas tank, everything is ready for them, and they are, are moving in.
But most of the mayor signed the agreement?
Second.
Motion is second, that the mayor be allowed to sign this agreement, all in favor, signify by raised hand, unanimous. We've had citizens come to us with a request or complaint about Haynes Trail. Seems like now, when the garbage truck goes back there, we've got two garbage pickups back there, and the truck is making some bad ruts, just as it comes off of Tarrentine to go back there, and then the other end, there's a big mud puddle that's about eight foot in diameter, and you don't know how deep it is until you can't find your car, I think. But I would like to have the approval of council to go to the county for assistance for working on that road, and possibly just a grading and gravelling. But I need, I need your consent to go to the county to make that request for assistance, to go before the county commissioners.
Does it seem to be worse now, in the last few months and overall? The reason I say that, because of all the rain we've had.
We have, but with the garbage truck going back there, one of the worst places is right at the, right at Tarrentine, where they make the turn, and that mud washes out into the road.
We had that repaired one year, didn't we? Had to put tile in or something, extra dirt, as it was a shark. And I know it's dark back there, I know there's a lot of shade, so I'm sure it is muddy.
The worst muddy place where that stays ever water all the time is down by the bank, that is, it's a really bad mud hole. But.
Would you have to take that to the commissioners, or to the?
First, we have to take it to, to Michael Fowler, and then he makes the request in an open meeting, and county commissioners have to approve it.
The president of the work, is that?
Yep.
The ones that, yeah.
So a motion of approval would be in order?
Make the motion?
On second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raised hand, unanimous. In your package, you'll find a resolution. We had to put out bids on the new grass cutting, on all the right ways in town. To go over a little bit of the facts with you, we put an ad in the paper and received many, many calls. Then we narrowed it down to about seven, eight, of those seven or eight, finally, we narrowed it down to six. They came in with a proposal, full proposals, and of those six, and, and all of those were put in, we put in the car, took them all over town, some of them, two times, showed them everywhere it had to be cut, brought them in, interviewed them, talked with them, and then we got with the, uh, got with the finance committee to sit down and discuss it, whether it was just three of us, a smaller group to talk it over, and this is the one that came out in the winter, and they would be able to start right away. Their charge is $650 per cut. The prices ranged anywhere from $525 to $1,200 a cut. The reason we didn't stick with the lowest bid, in many cases, was obvious, the young boys with a lawnmower, and if we'd have taken a low bid, we'd have been going through the bid process again, probably in about two months, after they decided it wouldn't work. So I need a motion to accept the resolution and sign it.
Make a motion?
Motion on the floor, is a second.
Second.
There's a motion in the floor and a second, any further discussion?
My hand up.
Oh, I said give my attention somewhere, you had to say maybe I'm.
Well, last time you said, hold your hand up.
Go ahead.
I pulled up the information on them, and it looks like they were just, um, I've got February the 2nd, 2016, was when they were organized, is that accurate?
That was accurate, as far as their organization, but they've been due this for much longer.
How much long?
I don't know, how long?
Uh, three, four years, but I know they've got a lot of equipment.
Yeah, just.
They do a lot of other. They got some contracts in Fayette County, but they got, they're located on the west side of Calhoun County, so they're pretty centrally located to be able to do this.
And they do have the time, they do have the talent, they do have the equipment.
Where did they fit it, the price range that you said it ranged from 525 to, did you say 1,200 exactly?
525 was the lowest bid, and this was young boys.
Well, I'm, the plan they fit.
And then the highest, highest was 1,200. I'll give you all the bids to give you the full lane.
No, I just wanted to range where they fit in there.
Right in the middle.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right in the middle.
Here we go with another particular situation. Who is Amber Turner Rhodes?
Amber's my daughter-in-law.
Shouldn't that be disclosed? She lives right next door to these people.
Well, I met him at their house, but, okay. Amber's my daughter-in-law.
Okay, well, I just think it needs to be disclosed, in fact, I think it should have been disclosed before the decision was made.
For what reason? I mean, I met him up there, I know he's.
The way it appears. End of second.
If you'd like to discuss that further, please feel free to do so. There is, there is no collusion going on here. Anything else, Polly? Hearing none, I assume that we're ready to vote, all in favor, signify by raised hand, please. Opposition, same sign? Polly, suppose. We're going to face this issue at some point, so I'm going to get it out of the way, because one of the people that we discussed a long care with, his specialty, or that his company's specialty is taking down large trees, he has all the equipment to do so, but before we start on them, we need to discuss it, because those old trees are in bad shape, and every time it come a heavy rain, and then we get a little wind, we get these big limbs falling all over the road. One of these days, they're gonna fall on the car, and the liability is scary. Probably want to bring it up for discussion, so we can at least talk about it. Anybody has anything that wanted to talk about it?
I've been in favor of taking care of them for years. In fact, is at one time, we had a tree commissioner member, and it got kind of fired, not by you.
Well, at one time, this is several years ago, I had the state forestry guys come out, and they went down and looked every one of them individually, and told us that they all needed to come down, because they was all in danger of falling. When we took one down recently, we ran into a little bit of trouble from some of the citizens about taking that tree down, so I'm getting ahead of the game here this time, and discussing it, if there's any opposition, we need to hear it now.
I think I'm allowed, okay. Get to that point, and we need to, have it looked at, too.
Did you know there's one on Tarrentine that's got a hole in it this big, that's been there for, since I've been living here?
Where, Polly?
On Tarrentine, I sent you a picture of it, a long, it's a while back.
Yeah, I got that one, yeah, Clay.
May I volunteer to meet with the forester man and let him look at these again?
That would suit me, Clay, what do you have a comment for? Does that make that decision?
Well, if you have had, if we had it documented, where we had this, an arborist come and look at them, and he gave his opinion that they did pose a safety hazard, then we would be remiss, regardless of how some people might feel about it, we'd be remiss not to take it as a safety issue, and do what we need to do is to, you know, get them taken down, and, but maybe with the replanning program, look for quality trees that fit in, and not tear up pavements or sidewalks, you know, something like that, but replant something.
And, of course, y'all have already done that, while I was down here for a while, y'all already planted some out here on Main Street.
Y'all.
You weren't a councilman. You wasn't no councilman, you weren't no councilman.
I don't think I've been in street escapes, I don't know anything about the other.
I was gone for two years, and I came back, and somebody planted some trees. The one that we did take down there, by measurement, it was about an 18-inch hollow in the middle of the tree, starting about 10-foot up, all the way up to the fork, and he called that, when I had that guy here, he said, "If you don't find that tree, it hollow all the way from that split, all the way down." The one across the street over there, down here, is worse than that one over there, you can see it from the ground, it's got a limb about yid big around, hanging right out over the road.
May I plead one more time, that, could, they're in the business of cutting down trees, even though they're arborists, I understand that. The Georgia Forester Commission would not charge us to come and look and see if any of them are savages, I don't want them to say that they're dangerous, of course not, but see if any of them could be saved.
Right, well, I'm in, I'm in favor of that, that's why we're brought it up in a meeting, but I think what we're gonna find is going to be disturbing to all of us, because I hate to take the old trees down, but, yeah, why don't you arrange, make those arrangements, and, at a time where I'd like to talk to him, too, as we go around. Any other comments on the trees? That's all we have on the agenda, other than going through our public comments, let's start over here. Polly, if you have anything, or would you like to comment on the library, I see that you've done some more work up there.
Let's move along. We finished the fiction, rearranging and weeding, and we're now working on the nonfiction.
Before we go there, I'm gonna ask Keith to tell us what you've got planned for the library.
Chromebooks would be the best way to, to give you, and if we get people from school to, to work up there, to give them a way to the internet, with surfing and email and things like that. I found a good deal a few months back, and I didn't jump on it, so I'm keeping my eye open, as soon as I do, we're gonna get a couple of Chromebooks to put up there for connectivity.
That work for you?
Yes.
They're nice, like, they're HP laptops, and mid-14-inch screen, very nice.
Well, I always had my business there, they came for the computers, though then they came for the books.
That's why I'm talking about ordering two of them, because if we were to have a summer program up there, they would probably need one, constructed one for the kids. Great, Ms. Bridges?
I'll just, a couple observations, with, you know, all the bidding process, isn't that, I mean, when, when you say you had all these bidders come, weren't they sort of, or should they have been sort of pre-qualified to even give a bid, I mean, two guys with a lawnmower, you know, obviously, no insurance, no, you know.
Strangely enough, they did have, that was the first question we asked them, because we asked several, and they didn't have it, that ended that, but yeah, some of these kids just starting out, you know, one group, 18, 19-years-old, had the insurance, had the machinery, but their bid way underwater.
But we, we, we as a town don't open ourselves up to issues by not taking the lower bid?
No, you don't have to take the lowest bid, in fact, in the bid qualification sheet, it so states that even after you have narrowed it down, you still have the right, under the agreement, to go back and negotiate. No, you don't have to take the lowest bid.
Well, I mean, I, you know, once you, I mean, why, why would we even have a bidding process, if, if you kind of already know who you're gonna give?
Well, bidding, the monetary part of it is only, only part, in that they have to show you qualifications, they have to, they, when, and you're talking to them and going through, you can pretty well tell who you think is gonna do the best job, and that's all you could do is, is just judge by that, but no, by all means, the low bid is not always the way to go.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just thought in, in a situation like this, you know, with personal preference and stuff, as an individual, certainly you can pick and choose, but I just was kind of thinking as a municipality, that was a whole process, would you get everybody, and everybody's qualified, so it's just, you're not looking at a lot of stuff, if they tell you they can do it, and then you hold them accountable to doing that, and it's a spec sheet, and this is what you do, and they got to be, you know.
Right, they all went through a pretty good interview process, I can tell you that, put them in the car, and spend an hour with them in the car, and going over all the questions, their background, the history, qualifications, experience, you can come up with a pretty good idea.
But there's no, I mean, and why, why are these guys, what's, what's, what was, what stood out?
First off, they're, they were physically qualified, had all the good machinery, the equipment was of good quality, like steel, and there was those that knew of the reputation of some of these people, and we would talk to them, but that's how we arrived at that one we did.
You got bad recommendations on all the folks?
Nope, just got better recommendations on that one.
I just, you know, I'm just curious, I'm not that up to speed, I guess, on the way all this works, specifically, what trees are y'all talking about taking down?
The very old oak trees out here.
I, I got that, but I mean, specifically, you know, tree in front of, you know.
Okay, first tree.
92 main, or?
First tree on the right, going down this way, first tree on the right, up this way, straight across the street, on the left, where one of the lightning hit two years ago.
On, uh, east of Tarrentine?
No, we're talking about on Main Street, straight across the street from here.
Okay, so there's one, there's one right here, there's one just up, okay, all right.
There's actually three right there, something on here, possibly.
And then there's one up at the corner of your lot, Main and Tarrentine, the one they used as a climbing tree, that one's got a couple of really bad limbs in it, that is one that could possibly be saved, if, if they think it can be saved, just take out some of the bad stuff.
These are all on city property?
Uh, yes, they're all on city property, in the case of one tree, that we did have to take out, that was severely damaged, next door to this one on the corner of Tarrentine and Main, took that one out several years ago, and it was all on the right of way, other than the last 12 inches.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to try to, like Polly said, a lot of people are looking at them, because they're in the business to take them down, I'd like to look at them, you know, as far as trying to do everything we could to save them, I, I just, I don't think, I think, I think Charlesburg, you know, doesn't need anymore.
Will you contribute?
Contribute, outside.
Save it, money.
Sure, if they're my tree.
Money.
I mean, we, we could talk, I mean, I, I don't want to be forced into doing stuff that I don't, that I don't see as needed.
Someone can't hardly see anybody forcing you to do anything.
What's that?
I can't see anybody forcing you to do anything. I'm saying that with a smile.
You need to wake up and look around.
But the arborist, I think, would be, would be fair with us, and tell us what can and can't be saved, and we will approach it just that way. Excuse me, Clay, go ahead.
I was gonna say, when Polly gets the forestry people out here, why not make sure, when they come out, they identify the location and particular tree, and the verdict on that particular tree, so everybody will know exactly which ones they say are a problem, or which ones can't be saved.
Right.
They did a big survey several years back, is that still in your possession, or is it?
We never received it, I, I actually looked today for an email from Mr. Perrow Bird, and I emailed him back a few years ago, asking for it, he was actually no longer employed there, but that he was back, part-time for two years, but he went back and moved, and didn't have it on fire.
Shoot. They did a tree down? They did, surveyed the whole town?
Yes.
Never got a couple.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue looking, but no, he, I, I found that email the day I was.
Now, when I talked to someone about a year and a half, two years ago, about the trees, we got an estimate from a couple of different companies, one tree that we knew was bad, but the others, we just got an estimate as to trimming them up, and cleaning them up, but just taking down one, and we're hoping that that might be the case here. Unfortunately, I think the one across the street over here, the one the lightning hit, I don't know how those are gonna fare out, but we'll try, we're trying to save them, basically, anyway.
Yeah, I'd just like to be a part of it, and just, you know, as far as seeing what, you know, what can be done to save them, I think that's a part of the history of the town, and a, and a
When the arborist comes out, when he comes out?
Adding value to the town.
Would you like to be with him, while Polly's around?
Just, yeah, I mean, if it's possible, yeah, I mean.
That would work.
One other thing, I'd email the town, I was trying to get, email Kim Dutton about the planning and steering committee, and she emailed Donna to, to try to get me in touch with everybody on there, because I don't think there's, there's not a really way to express any of my feelings or interest in, in the committee, you can't talk in that committee meeting, correct, the public can't?
Public can't, other than what's on the committee.
Right, um, is there any, any, any issues, I had gotten an email from you or anything, and that's been a couple weeks, probably now, is anything going on, Donna, that prohibits you from giving me the email addresses?
Other than I've not really been here for the last couple weeks, I've been, um, but I have received them, and we'll, we'll work at them, and I'll get them.
I mean, I, can I get them, I just, you know, I mean, that's.
I would, as far as I know, I'm not positive.
You're the one that has them, and that's what Kim had sent you the email, saying, you know, could you share them, and I just, I'd never heard anything, so.
And just for the record, when you want to contact these people, for what reason, Ms. Bridges?
Just to provide my input, I, I was kind of, thought I would be a part of that planning and steering, I think I was the first one that volunteered, and I was not, I don't, maybe you could provide some light on that issue, and why I was not invited to be on that.
Yes, I can, we contacted the attorney to see if that were possible, and the attorney said, at this time, as long as the litigation was going on, that we should limit that contact, and that's what we did.
That, I mean, that, those are separate issues, though.
Right, it's still issues.
Yeah.
With the same people.
But it'd be nice to have a little cooperation, just to let me know, you know, that that was going on, I mean, that, so that's why I'm trying to just reach out to those members of the committee, and just voice my concerns and my opinions.
And it's also gonna be a public here, a public meeting, too, that you'd be able to talk to.
Right.
Yeah.
That one you can be a definite part of.
How, how do we get notified about that?
It'll be on the website, probably in the morning, and also a survey officer will be on there for everybody to fill out.
Fill out the survey, be sure you send that back in, that is participating.
Is there any problem in me getting the email addresses to, to contact people on the committee, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why, I mean, that, that was one of the things the, the Three Rivers lady said, you know, you want citizens, you want taxpayers, you want business people, you want people that are entrenched in the town. You want people that are entrenched in the town in the future, and I, I would, I would dare say I would fall into one of those categories. I'm sorry?
Pardon, not the, pardon, sorry.
Yeah, uh, I don't see any reason why not. Um, I'm on the committee, you're on the committee, so you could talk to us anytime you want to also.
Sure. I mean, there are people that I don't know that are on the committee.
Right.
That, that's, and the whole committee in general. I mean, I'd like to address the whole committee and just send out an email and say, "Hey, here's some things I've thought about. Not sure what you've talked about or what you're thinking, but, you know, these are some things that I'd like to see in planning for the future and..."
Right, and, uh, if you can, uh, you know, you might want to show up at those meetings so that you can see what already has been discussed and the way the conversations are going.
But I don't have any vehicle to, to interject or anything, is what you just said, though. I don't, I don't have any way to interact. And I ha- I actually have, you know, gotten some feedback and that's, you know, definitely why I just wanna, you know, have some, some feedback or, or provide some feedback to you guys. I mean, you guys are looking down the road to the future of Sharpsburg and I, I think I might have a little bit of a vested interest in what happens.
Right, and, and I know I would like to hear some of that feedback, so come to me with some of it and to Keith, so that's one way.
Sure, you, you're part of the people that I'm trying to get the emails so I can address if the group as a whole.
Yeah, definitely, right.
Alright, well, that'd be good. Donna, if you maybe get around to doing that, that'd be wonderful. Be very cooperative.
Anything else, Mr. Bridges?
I'll see you.
Gentlemen, anything that you would like to add?
Um, no, thank you. I'm just here, um, to do my, I'm actually working on a merit badge, uh, for Boy Scouts. I, uh, I'm a Boy Scouts at Coke Chapel, uh, twenty, uh, trip twenty ninety, twenty-one ninety-three, and I'm working on citizenship, citizenship in the community, so that's why I'm here, just listening, taking some...
What's your name?
Uh, Chase Mason.
Chase Mason?
Yes, ma'am.
You have to attend a, uh, town hall meeting. You have to hear the discussion.
We're not gonna let you buy that easy. You're talking to an old scout leader here, so I'm not gonna let you buy that easy. You're going to have to, uh, uh, get in touch, talk to me, tell me what you learned.
Alright.
So that I know that you're an active participant in the meeting and that you knew what was going on. Did you take any notes?
Mm-hmm, I did.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, that's part of it. Alright. Sir, you have anything? Do you like that yet?
Oh, no, sir.
Alright, appreciate it. Poll of council, did anybody come to you with any questions that needed answering or things that they needed done here at the time?
Eric, the photographer said, "Thank you for the golds."
You're welcome for the golds. They do look good.
They look great.
Thank you, especially mine. Have them watching over it.
It was just cold and wet.
Didn't realize how bad the others look.
They look pretty sharp. Keith, anything?
I don't have any, but...
Clerk?
I do have one thing. Um, like, well, I just wanna tell you out there, uh, just so, the Quicken ladies, um, gave us a new microwave for the rec center. And I just wanted to recognize that they have done that.
See them, tell them thanks. We appreciate the ladies. Alright, um, mayor's comments, we talked about the sign. I told you that we would, we would, uh, send them the color of the, we talked about matching the base color with the color of the front door, and so I matched up the color, almost identical. Gave the lady the colors and she put them together for us. There's three here. And, uh, I'm going to start down on that end, if you would, please. Look at the three and if you see one you like, put your initials on it, uh, down here in the left bottom. Put that down there and, but we're gonna take just a minute to do that. There's a difference in those two. You saw that, this is the correction. Yeah, but I did smaller mine than, uh...
Where's the wind?
Think about it. You're gonna be looking at it from a pretty good distance.
I didn't realize it until from you, but mine's a lot bigger print, too. I didn't even pick up on that.
Yeah, I'll let you see that back again.
No, I like that one.
Donna, you've already signed yours. Look at it again if you wanna...
No, I don't. I want my choice. You wanna look again? We have it.
Yeah, you made my job tougher, I'll tell you that. Alright, this one's got, how do we wind up? Who's initials to that?
Me.
And this one?
Stan.
Is it a tie? It is two and two. How about that?
Alright, this one over here's got, got two more that's not on there. This one's got the most. This, you know, if you look at them from a distance, is the white washes out a little bit more than that. Now, what we are looking at doing tomorrow morning is outlining this with a small line of white around the edges. And see how that'll look.
That give back a difference.
Yeah, possibly. Uh, we're trying to get that to stand out more, but right now we got...
Well, the best way to get it to stand out is to have a lot of the contrast, like the darker background, uh, white background, not like all white.
But if we, but here's one thing that we're faced with right now. Think about all this other, the color of the building is like this. So if you put this background color the same as all this, it's gonna really wash out.
A lot of things you don't wanna watch that is the name.
That's right. Alright, well, I'll call and see if there's something she can touch up that we'll all be happy with, but right now...
I'm happy. Are you happy? I love that.
So far you, so far you're outvoted.
Takes concentration.
So far you're outvoted. Uh, quick report on what's going on. Um, septic tanks are completely finished and operable. They're, they are working at this time. Uh, the county, in a conversation with them yesterday morning, no, Friday.
Friday.
Friday, uh, they're gonna start back out here. They're ready as soon as it's dry enough. They had to wait till the septic tanks were finished 'cause that's where they'll be taking some of the dirt. They're gonna have to take some of the old dirt out, put some new dirt in, and then they'll pad that out. Uh, so they'll hopefully start this week. They said as soon as the weather will allow it. Uh... I think that's out of that that we hadn't already mentioned, so anything else to come before the council? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
I'll move to adjourn.
So move.